For Bloomfield Township, the Monday, November 4th meeting. For those of you who may not have been here before or not familiar with what we're doing here, anybody watching perhaps, the Planning Commission is a seven-member board. It's appointed by the Board of Trustees. We're a recommending body, so whatever we decide here will then go to the Board of Trustees for a final approval or not, and that gives you another opportunity if you have something to say to them. Tonight, it takes four votes, no matter how many people are here, it takes four votes in the affirmative to pass any resolution or not. So, but I think tonight we have, we have one, two, three, four, five, we have six here. So, we have a quorum, so we can take, do business, but it still takes four votes in any yes or no. So I hope this provides some insight as to how we work. I just said the attendance, we have, we have a quorum. So the first item would be approval of the minutes from the last meeting. You all had an, you all got them in the packet? Are there any comments, corrections, or any, anything? Then I, can I get, I need a motion then, please? So I moved.
Second.
Moved and second? All those in favor say aye for approval. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Public comments. If you have anything, anybody here wants to have anything to say other than what's on the, we're gonna, plenty of time on what the item on the agenda, but if it was something, somebody has something they want to say that, okay, I don't see any hands raised, I don't see anybody jumping up, so we'll move on then. The item we have tonight is a site plan approval, a site plan request, excuse me, for 40 Square Lake Road to Clean Express Car Wash. So Andrea, I think that you'll do the presentation for us?
Yes. Hi, good evening. Thank you. Andrea Bibby from the Planning Division here at Bloomfield Township. This evening, I am presenting a consideration to the Planning Commission for your input regarding a site plan at 40 East Square Lake Road. You can see the property highlighted here, outlined in the red on your screen. The site parcel that we're talking about is actually immediately south of Square Lake Road there, formerly the Tim Hortons drive-through, and this is also a parcel that you can see is a single zoning lot that also includes the Rusty Bucket that faces Woodward Avenue. So I think as many of you are familiar with the site, which is located at the northeast corner of Square Lake and Woodward, the proposal is to construct a new express car wash in the same location as the previous Tim Hortons. So the property owner, which is Jonah Properties, is seeking approval for this fully enclosed 11,000 square foot, 524 square foot Clean Express Car Wash at 40 East Square Lake. The property is, you can see, highlighted on your screen. You can see there is the red B3 classification, which is sort of that, that pass-through lot that goes from Square Lake to Woodward. You can see the dark red indicating a B3 zoning classification, and I also wanted to point out that this particular site does have double zoning, or has two different zoning classifications. Highlighted in the blue color, which would be on the eastern portion of the property, that is zoned P1. The intention for the P1 district, we can actually see there's a similar zoning classification on the opposite side of Woodward, behind the shopping center. The intention of that P1 zoning classification is just that, it is for the use of, as a traffic thoroughfare and for, and for parking. It is not intended to be used or occupied by, by a building or a use. So I just want to point out that even though we do have two zonings on this parcel, that the site plan does comply with the provisions of both of those zoning classifications. So the good news is no variances associated with this proposal. So just to tell you a little bit more about what the application is, again, this is a approximately 11,000 square foot fully enclosed car wash. Our zoning ordinance under the B3 classification does allow for auto laundries within the B zoning district as a permitted use. One of the criteria of car washes is that they are fully enclosed, and when we say fully enclosed, we mean vacuum cleaners, everything is actually going to be contained inside of the building, and then the car wash portion where the conveyor belt, where the car enters into the car wash, will actually be located along that westerly property line where the property essentially butts up to the back of the CVS Shopping Center. So most of the activity is going to occur to, again, to the west side of the building, which butts up to that CVS parking lot. So with that, the hours, the proposed hours of operation for this use do fall within the category of acceptable hours of operation within the township. Their request is Monday through Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So operating within our regular hours of operation, so no special consideration for the hours of operation. The business that is being proposed to us, which is express car wash, does have various locations, specifically, they have 90 locations, they're headquartered in Ohio, and they have operations across Ohio, Indiana, and Pennsylvania, and they currently have 10 under development within the state of Michigan. So that's just trying to tell you a little bit about the business themselves, and I also know that we have a representative in our office that can also speak to their business. So in terms of the site plan itself, again, the master plan, this does comply with the master plan, which designates this parcel to be a commercial, and which in this case it does comply with that commercial classification. And then within our zoning ordinance, we have all of our particular standards for consideration for site plan review. In this instance, the, this, the patron to the car wash, they can, they can access the queue line to get into the car wash queue in this location. They do show on their site plan approximately 19 cars that are stacked up before you hit the end of the queue line, and most likely traffic will be entering on from Square Lake Road, entering into the site where there'll be a curb that runs to the east side of the vehicles that are stacked here, in which they then will queue you through the wait line, and then to the south of the property, there is, there are pay stations in which the patron can come in, pay at the pay station, and then what they do is they enter inside of the building, which again, is a conveyor belt system in which the cars will then pass through on the conveyor belt. At that point, they have an opportunity to exit the car wash area, and they can then choose to exit the site either via Square Lake Road, or they can also choose to exit the site by then coming through that P1 zoning district that I referred to earlier, that blue sliver, and then they would come around, and then they could go through the Rusty Bucket parking lot. I do want to note, because this is one zoning lot, that there is a shared access agreement in which there is an acceptable cross-access between vehicles that may be crossing between this property. So, so they do have ingress and egress available from both Woodward Avenue and Square Lake Road, and they are also, in terms of the site itself, they are proposing all of their parking to be covered and enclosed, and again, if the, if the patron so chooses, they can exit the car wash, traveling north, and then they can come around, they can enter into the enclosed area, which would then have the vacuums as well as necessary staff parking. So the parking for the staff as well as the patrons, anything that would be utilized is actually enclosed inside the building. Let's see. The parking layout shows 22 spaces, which includes one barrier free space. The parking, parking requirement for the car wash is one space per employee, so they have ample parking to handle their employees. The traffic, there was a traffic study, which is a copy of that has been provided within your staff report, that was completed by Manik and Smith Group, and was reviewed by Traffic Engineer, Township's Traffic Engineer Fishbeck, in which they determined that the traffic study has been completed, and they do have a series of memos that do address their comments leading up to their last memo, which is dated October 30th, 2024, in which they find that the traffic study has been completed to meet the standards of the township. So that has been, the traffic movements, access on site in an ingress, egress, have been reviewed, and a traffic study provided by the applicant. Also want to note that along the north side of the property, there is a safety path which does cross over the site. Any changes or damage that may occur to that safety path throughout construction would be required to be repaired at the owner's expense. In addition to that, in terms of our site requirements, the applicant is providing an eight-foot-high masonry brick enclosure, trash enclosure to the rear of the site, which is required, as well as a loading area has also been provided in the rear of the building, which is also a requirement of a site plan application. So this is actually a nice overlay of the site plan over the aerial. The property, the only immediately adjacent residential properties would be immediately to the east of the site, and you can see here that with the buffer of the landscaping, there's also the parking lot, which is that P1 zoning classification, and then we're about, I think we're about 57 feet, 60 feet or so before we even get to the vehicle line from the, from the, from that easterly property line. So this kind of gives you an idea of where, how the site will overlay over where that existing Tim Hortons building is. And then now what this does, this shows you the overall site, as I spoke earlier, that this is considered a single zoning lot, in which both the Rusty Bucket and the car wash do occupy a single parcel. This is not uncommon within the township. There's multiple examples of multiple buildings on a single zoning lot, so this is not something that is uncommon or unusual. This is just, that's the configuration of the property, and it makes sense to look at this as one single zoning lot as opposed to single separate lots. In terms of the landscape plan, a landscape plan was provided and reviewed by our township's landscape architect, Michael J. Duel, for conformance with the ordinances. Their report dated October 30th, 2024 concludes that the proposed landscape improvements meet the intent and standard of the zoning ordinance. They note that prior to tree removal, the tree removal permit, which would be permitted anytime that you're constructing, asking to remove trees, this is part of a site plan application, they will be required to secure a tree permit, and the memo from Michael J. Duel, which would have to be met in order to be part of the consideration by the board this evening, is to have the criteria addressed by Michael J. Duel, and again, what that states is prior to a tree removal permit, the applicant must revise the plans to include a comprehensive tree removal plan to ensure accuracy, accuracy in the field. The applicant is well aware of this criteria, just a little more clarity as it involves which trees are being removed and how they're going to be replaced, that's come from our landscape architect. Based on the 22 parking spaces, as I stated earlier, four parking lot trees are being proposed in conformance with the ordinance. The report also notes that two existing trees are proposed to remain in the green belt area of the site. So when we talk about green belt requirements, we do require a landscape buffer to be located within that front parking lot setback, which in this case would be along Square Lake Road. The applicant has provided a, a buffer, a green belt, if you will, in that area, as well as providing ample landscape islands to, to the north elevation, as well, as well as adding some additional trees along that easterly elevation, adding some parking lot interests along here to the south of the building, as well as additional trees located here on the east of the building. So the applicant, given the amount of impervious area that they have, or a non-impervious area, I should say, in order to do the plantings, you can see that they are doing the best in maximizing as much of the green space as they can on the site. Here you can see an overlay of the property, which shows the, to the left of the screen, would indicate the ingress and egress from Square Lake Road, and then you can kind of see the, the lane in which a patron would enter in, drive around to the rear of the building, go to the pay station, and then proceed through the car wash. In terms of the building materials themselves, the building materials would be very compatible with the design of other buildings within the township, as well as in the area, they're consistent. The building materials include a fiber cement siding, as well as brick for the majority of the building. The fiber cement siding, which is located on the south elevation for the car wash exit and vacuum entrance. Pay stations are proposed to be covered by nine-foot-high canopy, so that's the height of the canopy, is at nine feet, and all vacuum cleaners, as I stated earlier, will be fully enclosed. Light poles are not going to exceed 20 feet in height, so they will be adding some new light poles within the parking lot. They have provided a photometric study indicating any overflow lighting onto adjacent properties. They do meet the requirements in accordance with the ordinance, and they do know that there is, it's measured from 20 feet from grade. They cannot have any lights that would exceed that, and they actually have provided within their site plan documentation that they do comply with that requirement. So they did a nice job on the 3D rendering, so this would be the view from Square Lake Road. I do want to make mention that this time, the applicant has added the signage more as a interest, but they will, they do understand that they will have to go back to the Design Review Board for any proposed signage, but I just want to make note of that, that is part of the considerations by the Planning Commission tonight, and a condition would be that the applicant would be required, if this site plan should go forward and be approved by the Township Board, that they would have to seek a necessary approvals from the Design Review Board. This would be a view essentially from the east, so this would be looking from the, I'm sorry, I failed to mention the neighbor, the neighboring, HOA is Colbert Hills Association, and I do want to note that the applicant, Haley Jonah, did submit a letter as well as a copy of a site plan to the HOA chair. You do have a copy of that letter within your packet, and you can see based on tonight's turnout, as well as little inquiries that I have received, I am not aware, nor do I know of any major concerns that the neighbors have at this time. Perhaps the applicant could maybe add to that, but at this time, I have not received, after sending out any notices, any, any interest from the neighbors. I do want to note that there is an existing masonry wall that does run, which is a requirement between residential and commercial use. That masonry wall is not anticipated to be changed during this, for this application, and will remain as that barrier buffer between the residential and commercial. And so this would be essentially a viewpoint from the, I guess, the southeast easterly corner of the, of the car wash. So you can hear, you can see the pay stations, you can see the dumpster enclosure located in the rear of the site. And then this is an image of the interior of the, of the, in the vacuum area. And then here we have some photos of the existing site. You can see there on your right-hand side, you can actually see, it's a pretty good show, illustration, you will, of that, that masonry wall, that screen wall that is currently in place, as well as the existing vegetation. You can also see that there's a bit of a grade change as you go, as you travel to the west, from the east to the west, you can see there's a bit of a grade change as it dips down to that parking lot. Again, then this is showing the current ingress and egress from Square Lake Road. So this site plan did have an opportunity to be reviewed by our various departments. The fire department noting that they have no objections to the proposal, just noting some requirements that will be required as it relates to fire suppression, fire hydrants, as well as FDC connections that is required at the time of the issuance of permits and review. Police Department noted they have no objections to the proposed project. And Environmental and Engineering Services, in conjunction with Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, who is our consultant engineer, has also reviewed the preliminary site plan with respect to the water main, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, storm water management and grading, and they have found that the necessary revisions that have been provided, they, they do make recommendation for site plan approval, subject to approval of the plans by the Township Board of Trustees. HRC also conducted a water analysis and sewer capacity study, which determined that there is suitable water pressure and flow available to the site. Both reports are included within the packet for your review, and of course, we can answer any questions. I do know that they have an engineer here as well to answer any questions. With that, I reviewed the lighting, I reviewed the siding, the signage. I will say that this did also have an opportunity, this site plan, to go before the Design Review Board on October 16th, 2024. The site plan was received well by the board members. They did forward it on with a favorable recommendation to the Planning Commission, and with that, I am asking the board to consider, to hear any public input, and for you to consider under what conditions you may recommend a consideration onto the Township Board of Trustees. As I stated earlier, there would be no variances. They do meet all the bulk standards in terms of height, setbacks, requirements for the site, which is always good. Anytime we see new construction, that's always what we're striving for. We're striving to get a development that complies completely within the, within the confines of our, of our zoning ordinance. In this case, they've been able to do that. With that, I am certainly happy to answer any questions, but as you can see, there's a whole team in the audience that can also speak to any questions you may have.
Okay, on the, coming back to the Planning Commission first, before we go to that, any questions for Andrea?
Did the, did the traffic study make any comment about the queuing? It's the same curb cut that's there, right? They're not changing the curb cut.
The traffic engineer's report did not have any issues with the queuing, and I think we can actually, if we bring the applicant up here, I think they can speak to their operations and how quickly they can get a car in and out and through that car wash because of the conveyor belt system. And they do show on their site plan, like I stated earlier, I think they showed up to 19 or 20 cars, let's see, stacking already within the queue. Yeah, let's see, one.
Can you hold that frame right there?
Yep.
Is that, and that's the engineer's overlay? So the, so the curb cut is going to change a little bit? Is that right? So that overlay is not exactly.
Not totally accurate, not totally up to scale. But the only, the only, the only concern the traffic engineer had was there was about, there was about, and it's, it's, within your documentation, there is about a 5% chance a year, they, because we always have our traffic engineer take the worst-case scenario. Based on their numbers and based on their review, they, there's about a 5% chance that they may, that the, the operator may have to have people come outside and direct people so that there is no conflicts at that location, but I can also have the applicant speak to that, because they were required to provide a management plan, a traffic management plan to our traffic engineer, in which they addressed in that worst-case scenario, what would you do if there was a conflict there? But in the general, in the general review, there wasn't any concern that that would not, that this would not be enough stacking to accommodate the proposed use.
Got it. So my second question is, yes, we have lots of properties where we have multiple facilities on one parcel. Is the, is the parcel under one ownership?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else?
I just had that same question, it's not even pertaining to this property, but any property that has more than one use on the same zoning, is it a requirement that it's under one ownership, or is that just happens to be the case here?
No, not necessarily. In some instances, there could be a commercial condominium.
Correct.
Where there is, you know, actual legal description associated with two parcels that's been accepted by our assessor.
Technically, two different owners, yeah.
Correct.
And then the existing wall, is it a six-foot-high wall that's existing right now?
Correct.
Six-foot-high wall? I mean, I, I like the site plan, I was just curious, do all the other stores, maybe when the applicant, do all the other stores have indoor parking, or is that unique to this location?
I, I do think that there was some prototype involved with this design, so perhaps you'd like, maybe now would be a good time for you to come up to speak, to speak to that?
Well, just be, just want to make sure nobody else has any questions first.
Understood.
Not right now.
Okay. Yeah, I have some too, but afterwards. Okay, then applicant can, fine, thank you.
Thank you, Andrea and Patty, for working with our team, who I'd like to introduce to you. I'm Richard Rassell. I met Williams, Williams-Rottner &amp; Plunkett in Birmingham, 380 North Old Woodward. So Haley Jonah and Leith Jonah are with Jonah Properties. They are the owner of the site, the, the parcel that is common to both Rusty Bucket and the proposed Express Wash. We have Dennis Miller with the, with the tenant, who's, can talk to you about the operations or any of the detail that you may be wondering about. And then Jake Grillette is with Manik &amp; Smith, the civil engineering firm that helped design this location and this proposed site. So a couple of things, just to echo a couple of the points that Andrea made. This site is zone B3. When we were first trying to figure out how we were going to make this site work for, for a car wash, we met with Andrea and Patty, they were accommodating as usual to having meetings with us so that we could sit down and try to figure out what really was meant by this fully enclosed concept here, because Express Wash has not done a site like this anywhere in the country. So we had to, and after meeting with Andrea and Patty, it was clear that what that meant was the enclosure of the vacuums, the enclosure of all the light, all the noise, all the mechanical equipment, and so we set to work with Manik &amp; Smith in Architecture and with the ownership group, and we have been at it for now several months, trying to come up with a site that was fully enclosed, took into account all the environmental concerns of noise and light, and, and enclosed those completely within a building, and that we would be able to use the site without requesting a single variance. So we've been at this for some time, working at this to, we could come here tonight and, and propose a site that conforms with all of the ordinance standards. The operations of this, of this car wash, which have been, there's a little over 90 stores across the country, we can tell you that 95% of the percentile with regard to the use of this site is going to have approximately six to eight cars in the queue at any one time. The queue can handle 19 to 20, and there's a very small period of time, usually after a heavy snow, maybe after a, a day after, if there's a bright, drier day. So there, that there may be an occasion more than, you know, six or eight cars in the queue, but that's the 5% that we're going to experience a couple of times a year, and due to the operations of this car wash at all of the locations that it operates across in the Midwest here, we've learned how just to handle that very small period of time. I note that Square Lake Road at this location is a right turn only, so obviously you don't have cars trying to pull out and making a difficult left, so it's right turn only there. And, and what has, because the Jonas have owned the site and were the prior landlords for the Tim Hortons, they can tell you that when Tim Hortons suffering some business, you know, negative business consequences as a result of the COVID experience we all lived through, decided to close this location in 2021, there has been some interest in the site from other tenants, but it is, I think in the interest of both the township and for the applicant, of course, that this site be redeveloped now, and that this, this is going to allow us to take what was a successful, for many years, drive-in facility at this location, and turn it into something that is going to, you know, process what we feel is even less cars over the course of a period of days on effectively the same site, working within the confines of your ordinance and not having to seek a single variance for design, or for setbacks, or for height, or anything. So I think that in looking at this site and studying it and trying to come up with a plan that we knew would be successful for the business, because it's a, it's a very significant capital investment in closing the site, this is a very unique concept that has been pursued by this applicant here for this location, so we're obviously very confident in our ability to operate a successful site here, to redo the site, to bring it into conformance with all the ordinance requirements, and to replace, you know, what is a closed business facility on a major thoroughfare in Bloomfield Township. So again, the technical issues, of course, are that there's going to be a ground lease with the tenant, the ownership is the same with the Rusty Bucket. We did get the consent of the Rusty Bucket for this business operation, replacing the Tim Hortons, so they're fully aware of what we're doing. We did communicate with the neighbors, as Andrea mentioned, and we have not received a single comment back, and we feel we're going to be a very successful citizen, corporate citizen in this location, and we're willing to make the commitment to try to do the site right, and, and working with staff has been very helpful in that regard. Moving the project along, so that, now that we're here, as the Design Review Board saw, we're bringing a quality project to the township. And obviously, the stat, the, all of the, the folks here are here to answer your questions and some of the more technical issues that you may have. some of the more technical issues that you may have.
Okay. All right. I'd like to ask one question first. Are you, like almost every other one of these car washes today that are being developed, have memberships where people pay from, by the month, and they just can come in, recognize the license plate and go straight through? And then you have people who pay at each event? Is that correct?
Dennis, why don't you come on up? On the business operations side, I'd like Mr. Miller to address your question. I think that's an excellent question.
Good evening. Dennis Miller from Express Wash. I'm a consultant for him here in town, and we're very excited about this site. And like Andrea said, that the, this is the first one we've done with an enclosed vacuums in the whole country. And we just hit wash number 100 this week, so we're not 90 anymore, we're 100. And all owned by Express Wash, and we operate them all ourselves, no franchisees. So we have a group, district managers and regional managers, and we have 10 under construction right now in the Detroit area. So you'll probably see us here and there. We have two open in Roseville and Grashit, and very excited about Detroit. And we got Waterford's going to open on Wednesday by the Meyer, so we're excited about this area, for sure.
About the gentleman's question about the pay process, though?
Oh, yeah. We have, we have the membership program, 20, I don't know what the rates are going to be here, but $29.99 per month, but you can do a single wash, too. You don't have to be a membership. We try to sell the memberships when you come in, of course, to.
The reason I ask that question is because it shows on the plan, you have one queue on the, whatever side it is, the queue line that comes through. Breaks into two.
Right.
Is one of those the automated lane for members, and the other, when they go to the window, have to pay?
That's correct. Yeah. So we can, we can, either way, usually have a person at the kiosk helping someone go through, but if you already have a membership, you can go right through.
Okay. So why, why couldn't you, why don't you have two lines coming down, one for members, one for pay, so that someone's sitting there with a credit card that doesn't work, and they got another card, and they have all, the others aren't all backed up all the way out?
We could, we really don't have the room here to do two.
Well, we have a lot of parking.
On the one side, we had the single lane at the top there.
Okay, all right.
And we wouldn't be able to do a double lane there. But in the back, we can, right? We can do that. But there's not, it's not an issue.
Okay.
It runs really quick on the kiosk.
The two, I have, there's two concerns I have, and that is, at the entrance there, you have one entrance off Square Lake Road.
Yes.
You have four activities going on at the same time there. You have one, getting on the queue to go through the car wash, two, you have cars going into the vacuum area, three, you have cars coming out of the vacuum area, and four, you have cars coming out of the wash area, all right into that one area, one space. Now, I know there was a traffic study, I get that.
Right.
They're the professionals, but it seems to me that that's really pretty, it could get pretty congested up there.
Well, we do.
Especially if, if they're, it gets backed up, and then, does the belt stop automatically so that cars aren't dumping out into that?
Yeah, we do have, the line itself, the tunnel line, has a switch there.
Okay. Well, anyway, what about that? There's four activities right there.
I'll have my engineer.
Hi, I'm Jake Rillet with the Manneken Smith Group. Yeah, so the, first thing, there is an automatic sensor, it's not even a manual button that the employee has to push or anything, that'll stop the wash in the case of any sort of backups. That was actually a question that Fishbeck raised about the number of activities in that area, and their concern about traffic movements. So in order to address that, as part of our traffic management plan, one of the things we did was add quite a bit of additional signage. You can't see it on this sheet, but there's a yield sign coming right out of the vacuum area so that they know.
Do you want to use this to kind of?
Yeah, here we go.
Give a little direction of the signage?
Yep. So the intent is for vehicles traveling up this road to have the main right-of-way, they'll have priority on leaving here. Then vehicles exiting the wash here, they're going to come out, there's a yield sign for vehicles, oop, lost my light. Anyone leaving here is going to have a yield sign right about there to let them know that these people have priority. There's a stop sign and a stop bar right here to prevent them from just pulling right out here. And there's also some, a directional sign directing them to wait, wait for clearance here so that they don't stack and block this lane. And there'll also be, we have one employee at all times dedicated to outdoor, either helping people with the kiosks or traffic flow, if there was any sort of backups or congestion. But a lot of directional signage was added to the site plan to satisfy Fishbeck's requirements to manage this area effectively without conflict.
So you feel that it's control, it can be controlled, there's not going to be a hazard of everybody coming in every different direction?
Yeah.
Okay. And the only other thing, I can, I think I see from this where it's not going to be a problem, but something I thought about when I looked at this is that the last operation inside the building for the cars being washed, the last thing that happens is a blow, the blower comes on and dries the car off.
Yes.
Which is really noisy.
Yeah, we actually.
Really loud. But I see it's at the, this end of the building, and it's not up against where the houses are, and I suppose it's far enough away, but is that, do you think that, is that a concern?
So we've actually provided a sound study for that blower. It's the same one we use in all of our other prototype buildings, even that aren't fully enclosed here, but we provided that to the township that shows the noise level at different distances away from there, and by the time you get to, I think it's 30 to 60 feet, you're at the same noise level as a standard road.
Yeah, well, I see that that entrance is way down this part of the building, and the houses, or the residential are up on the other end, so it seems like it's not, it's not blowing, it's not right at them.
Yeah, you're not going to have any noise issue on the neighborhood.
It does get noisy, okay. Thank you very much. Anybody?
No, plus the noise with, you have Square Lake Road going with a lot of cars, I wouldn't be concerned.
Yeah, okay. Anybody?
Good.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much. Right, so what do you want to do?
Well, I was going to say that I was, you know, I read all the materials, of course, but even with the presentation, I'm more comfortable with the project than I was even reading it, because with having everything fully enclosed as we require, certainly will make it less intrusive on the adjoining neighborhood, and maybe that's why they're not here. But certainly is an upgrade to what's currently there, and they've done a really nice job, and I'm supportive.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Oh, go ahead.
Question, and a little comment, but, you know, they've got a lot of really great technology in their storm water management, some of the bioswells, I mean, they got the mandated detention, but they got Vortex, they got the bioswells. Was that your requirement? Or was that?
Township's requirement through engineering, yes.
Required the bioswells and the Vortex?
Or just to comply with the standards that are prescribed by Oakland County.
The county mandate?
Yeah.
Stormwater, open city, and came with counties, bioswells, that's an additional in the county request. On this one, there's really not a whole lot of states that use for one of those, and can't, we're not able to fully satisfy everything that they would normally ask, but in every other site we develop, no, we don't, and other areas. As long as you're showing the intent to, to best your ability, they're available.
Yeah, because you got the detention and the vortex anyway, so.
One thing that they didn't mention is they reclaim like 95% of their water, which is actually very sustainable. I forgot to mention that.
Very well done. Nice resolution from a Rubik's Cube of requirements that the township places on it, so we appreciate it.
That's polite. All right, then I guess we need to use a motion.
Make a motion that we make a positive recommendation and move this on to the Township Board for consideration.
Second.
So, yeah, so based on the site plans that's submitted, the Planning Commission, as I said, we want to move this on, 40 East Square Lake Road to the Township Board with the following, following requirements of compliance with the requirements of the Township Departments, compliance with the requirements of the Township Landscape Architect, compliance with requirements of the Township's traffic consultants, and then review and approve for signage by the Design Review Board.
Thank you.
Okay, that's the motion. Did you second it already?
Yes.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Nope.
All of us in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you. Good plan. Looks good.
Appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Take care.
Okay.
There's a, there's a gas station right next to it.
Yeah.
And then there's the traffic turning from red to green, and then everybody's heading east from Square Lake Road. I'm a little skeptic of the traffic pain.
Well, I think it's probably less than what Tim Hortons said. Tim Hortons, constant flow, cars coming in and out. It is, it takes a little longer for each car to go through, so.
They would never get another curb cut, though.
No.
I mean, that's, that thing's gonna, you never get to, it's, they're probably gonna keep that one there.
I think the only thing is that all those four activities happening at the same time right at the edge, but you know what? Traffic, I say it's okay, so, all right.
When's Square Lake going to be, the road going to be finished so they can construct this thing?
I don't know the exact timeframe.
Is that an interfere? I mean, they, that would have to be finished first, I would assume.
Well, before they open, but yeah.
They could come in through.
Well, they got the first layer of asphalt already down. I was there today.
That's not gonna.
First layer is already down, so they only have one more layer of asphalt to go back.
Oh, the road, you're saying?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It was tough getting in there today. I couldn't figure how to get in and look at it.
We do have a couple more items on the agenda if you wanted to get through, just to call it.
You do? Oh, my gosh, I didn't even see.
We don't have any.
No, wait a minute.
Additional items on the agenda.
No, we don't.
Yeah. State that for the record.
Okay, we don't have any more items on the agenda.
No.
I'm looking at that, I'm saying, wait, I didn't see anything else. Okay. Well, but is there anything, items that are not on the agenda that anybody want to bring up for, to bring up for future discussion or an item? Okay, I don't see that. So the next planning commission will be November 18th, meeting if there's anything, so I guess that's about all we have. We need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved, seconded, we're adjourned, thank you.